It's recorded, okay. I think. John. 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 I see everything. I see an I.
Okay. Call meeting go order, comments from the board. Anybody wishing to address the board, go ahead. Already the presentation was supposed to be Janet Kennedy from Land of Lakes of Bloomingdale's. Melissa, go ahead with her D and H thing.
Okay. Was Janet going to be coming?
She was supposed to be here.
Okay, well, we'll all get started and maybe she'll come in or do my presentation. Thank you for allowing me to come in and give you a quick update on the D and H project. I wish I was coming bearing better news, but I'm bearing the news that is, that's all we have at this point. So, we held a project meeting on Friday, and Mayor Baker and Trustee Masdel were in attendance. At the meeting, we heard an update from the contractor, and we talked about some of the issues. So, just to flag the highlights for you. Because of the holdups in the asbestos abatement and the fact that winter is coming, you see the snowflakes in the air tonight, the contractor is requesting an extension through the end of May to be sure that the exterior painting can be done. And, you know, this has been something I know you've probably been thinking about. I've been just waiting. It seemed inevitable to me that at some point you were going to realize we weren't going to be painting in February. And he has now officially made that request. DOT was on the phone with us. Their suggestion was to go ahead and ask for an extension of the ARA grant funding through the end of May. And that would be the absolute hard stop ending for the contractor. So, Vince Jamison is putting together his new schedule. In fact, I think he's already worked on that. That'll go through the chain through Ermin Anthony and back to me, and then we'll put in the formal request to DOT. This will, with an extension of the contract, that is, an extension of your guarantee that the money comes back to you when the project is done. I would expect that we would get approval of that. If we don't, then there is another method to basically promise Jamison payment when the job is done. And it's a whole arrangement they described to us on the phone, pretty complicated. That's a fallback. Hopefully, we won't have to do that. Hopefully, we'll be able to just go ahead and get that extension. So, that's the story on the schedule. DOT was quite insistent, and I completely agree with them, that while we may extend the timeline for the painting, we're not going to do a blanket extension through May. We're still going to expect all the other work that can progress inside the building to progress. We don't want, you know, the contractor prioritizing something else perhaps ahead of our project and leaving us rushing at the end. So, that's the story on the schedule. Tonight, in the bills, I believe you have the first two contractor payment requests. Jamison, Civil, and also Bill Jabut's Electrical. Those have been approved. I've looked at them. We have a final sign off on DOT, so I would recommend those to the board for payment as part of the warrant. We will turn that right around, as we usually do with a payment request to DOT. And I would hope that you would see payment on that within six weeks to two months at the most. They move along pretty well. Their DOT requests come back pretty well. Okay. We have had three change order requests filed. The first one, the board already approved in concept, that was the asbestos abatement. We have two more change orders that have been requested. One is for the roof transition. Apparently, when the design firm looked at the existing conditions, because of the way the slate was and the flashing, they missed the change in angle. In order to, you can't bend slates, so in order to adjust for what they found when they took off the flashing, they were going to have to put additional copper. So, change order number two is for additional copper flashing to make that transition. Change order number three is for additional support beams in the canopy, in the back platform area. When they did the demolition, they found more rot than they expected, and so they had to put in additional beams. Now, both of those, we sent back for additional information. And because what we want with the change orders, we want to see what we said we'd pay for versus what's the new work that's being asked for. And that new work has to be justified either by materials and labor costs or by, if there was an item in the bid and they're just doing more, it has to be by the amount of that unit price in the line item on the bid. It's all to be accountable so that, you know, the village taxpayers and the federal taxpayers that are paying for this are protected. But what I would request of the board at this point, you've already approved change order number one. If you would authorize the mayor to sign the change orders as soon as they are approved by DOT and myself, then we won't hold up Vince Jamison. And I think he would certainly appreciate that. So, if the board would do that, I would appreciate it, and I think he would too. Okay? Okay. Now, here's the news that I wish I could be giving you better news on, and that is where we stand in terms of the capital project. This is that same project spreadsheet we've been working with, with our funding sources totaled in green at the top, the original amount of the bids, and then we started with the additional work that has eaten it through the contingency funding that we had. We had our KAS expenses. They monitored on our behalf for the asbestos abatement. That EA supplemental number two, this is a request that we will be receiving because of the additional time in the schedule. The engineering firm promised us 24 weeks of work. We're going to have several more than that, so they'll be coming back. That has not been approved yet, but I'm anticipating it will take at least the $9,900. I had that in before we knew about the extension of the painting, so that will probably actually be higher. Then we have our construction change orders that we just discussed. As you can see, by the time we add all that up, our contingency is down to about $6,000. And as far as I'm concerned, when you look at the extra inspection, we might as well say we're pretty much out of wash now. So, we had this discussion at the meeting, talked Vince Jamison. You know, I will say you have a contractor that's aware of this and is very sensitive, trying to help the village out. Looking at your options at this point, since we now have pretty much, you know, we're anticipating we will spend all of the funds we know about. I have hope that that grant is submitted in July. We put in another $95,000 to finish the site. I have hope that we will hear on that next month, but again, you never know until you actually get the award. So, if you do get your next waterfront grant, there'll be another $95,000 in there for the station. That's a possibility. What Vince Jamison and I discussed was trying to rethink the project, the items that are left, as to what the village forces might be able to do to then cut his contractor costs down. So, what this would affect, and this is just, you know, theoretical. He's going to come up with a list of things that he feels could be done by the village crew over the winter and price out what he thinks the savings will be. And then it'll be up for you, to you and Brian and the crew, to decide what they might like to do. The beauty of this is it would reduce that contract value, so if there's no cash out. And the waterfront money, the 2011 EPF, that $90,000, that could be reallocated to materials. So, it's currently contractual to pay the contractor, but we would just do a budget amendment so that grant could buy the materials for the guys and that you use their labor. So, that is another option to keep in mind. As, you know, it'll be something to work through. Again, trying to keep the cash out to zero if we can. Okay, so, any questions?
Yes. Did this job go up for bid?
I'm sorry?
This job.
Oh, yes.
So, what's with all the changes and the extra money?
Well, it's an old building.
I understand what you're saying.
Could I finish, John? Then I'll be glad to take your question. So, it's a matter of when you rip open the back addition, finding additional, you know, beams that need to be replaced.
Usually contractors, they say, "Okay, I'm going to redo this wall." And it might be stopped, "I'm going to go to add in extra money just in case there is."
You can't do contingency on these, unfortunately. There's no contingency allowed in this DOT process.
So, listen, a lot of the money could be coming out of village taxpayers.
I certainly hope not. That's what we're just working through.
Certainly hope not.
Yeah, every time, no, every time you say a change, it's costing money.
Absolutely.
There's only so much money in the grants and everything.
Absolutely.
The asbestos, what killed us.
There's no, they must have knew there was asbestos in there before they started.
They did.
They did.
So, they didn't figure on that?
No, unfortunately, it had been disturbed and had to, the entire space had to be cleaned up. And then there was additional discovered. There was vermiculite that was discovered.
Actually, you had no figures what it was going to cost once. But until it's done, you're not going to know what it's going to cost.
Not perfectly, no, junior. Just like any old patch you work on, no, not perfectly. But I, we have a pretty good sense of what's likely ahead of us. And that's what we're trying to work at, how to keep the cost.
But now you're saying the village crew might have to do some work to keep money in.
I'm offering alternatives to the board that they might choose, right? And just like, you know, they'll have to do the best they can with the situation they're presented with and the options they have, just like you did when you sat on the board, you know, same thing.
I also just want to comment that the grant has been in progress for a long time. $160,000 was already spent before we ever came up to this part. If we did not go forward with building or restoring the D and H, we would have paid back $160,000, no matter what. So, even if this project goes over budget by $160,000, it's still $160,000. The taxpayers would have to pay if we hadn't gone forward.
Well, I realize that, Megan. I'm just saying, if you had engineers looking at it and the contractor put their bid in, it should cost more than their, what they said it'd cost.
Except that it's undiscovered, I mean, it's unknown condition. So, in a bid, you put in, assume, you know, 10% replacement or 50% replacement.
Sure, they did.
They did. And so, if they find 75% needs to be replaced, then they come back in with a change order. So, John?
The only thing is, we're discussing a very rapid engineering firm. They can't figure the angle on a roof?
And that is not resolved yet.
Well, I'm telling you, this is a bit ridiculous. They bid it, so if they have to put extra into it, it's their problem. It's certainly not the village's problem.
Well, and that's something we need to pursue.
Well, I guess so. Because I'll tell you what, if they work for me and they said, "Now, we have to change the whole plan," that's their problem. They bid it this way. That's the way it is. That's all we're going to pay. At least, that's all I would pay. If anybody authorizes anybody extra money for this thing after the engineering firm moved in, assessed the building, assessed the angles, did all this stuff, and all they want is extra money? They bid it. That's what they have to do the job for.
Well, but the people who want the money, it's the contractor who bid it.
Who bid it.
Right.
Right. So, he made the bid. If he bid it and he didn't put all this stuff in there, that's not the Village of Rouse's Point's problem.
Well, I agree. It may not be the village's problem. It's definitely not the contractor's problem.
What do you mean? He bid it.
He bid it according to plans. If the plans were incorrect, then this one's not his problem.
Well, then the engineering firm should pay it.
So, that is where we.
I don't feel the village board should authorize $1 more than the bid for anything, because those people have plenty of time to assess this. And this angle, especially this angle thing, I mean, an engineer should be able to figure the angle on a building in a heartbeat. This is not, you could do this at home.
So, he can't go any further with the roof until there's a change order? Is that correct?
But who's going to pay for all this?
What specifically, John?
The thing, the whole project at the end. Are we going to go into village taxpayers?
When you were on the board and the board approved the contract, when you voted for this DOT contract,
No, I wasn't on the board and they approved the contract.
Actually, you were, John. May 2010 or 2009, you were in fact on the board, and you sat on the project advisory committee until you left the board.
Okay. But when they come back with the bid, if somebody bids your house to repair it, $X hundred.
It's not my house, though.
I understand. It doesn't make any difference.
It does, though. It does. It makes a huge difference, because it's not just my decision or, I mean, it's a totally different situation. There's a set of regulations you have to follow, and.
I understand that, but the guy looked the building over, and especially this angle on the roof, it's really bothersome. He's an engineer.
I agree with you.
If the slate won't meet, I mean, that's an engineer's problem.
I agree with you.
And the guy that took the contract for that amount of money, that's what he should get.
Okay, but that's a different person, though, because the engineer is not.
John, that's, excuse me. This is why we have all these options to take over contingencies like this. It's actually the architect's fault.
But it's not the Village of Rouse's Point's fault.
I'm sorry?
It's not the Village of Rouse's Point's fault.
That's correct. That's correct. She's agreeing with you.
Therefore, if there's extra, the architect should pay for it.
That's correct.
Okay. So, what you're saying now, if we have to change this angle on this roof and these other pieces of things were rotten because it wasn't properly checked, the Village of Rouse's Point should not have to put any bills for this?
That's correct. We're looking at options to see what we can do to avoid that.
To avoid it? We shouldn't have to avoid it.
But what we can.
We are trying to avoid it, John. That's the issue. We're going to discuss this professionally, and we're going to look at all the options. We're not going to argue. And whatever is the best option for the Village of Rouse's Point, so the taxpayers don't have to pay, that's the one we're going to pick.
The taxpayers shouldn't put any bills.
I agree. I absolutely agree.
But the contract that you agreed to with DOT obligated the village to finish the project. And that was part of the project.
But we worked off the bids.
The village is, no, no, we had no bids. The village accepted a contract to complete that building. They, you took $832,500 for it, but you signed on in May of 2009 to complete that building. That's what Trustee Reed was referring to. So, we are obligated to finish. That's why this board went through this whole process and decided to continue, because they realized the legal obligation. And what we're trying to do is keep the cost down. And what we won't do is now, at this point, draw a line to stand and say, "Stop construction," because that puts our funding in jeopardy at the other end. So, it's a balancing act.
Well, the only thing is, I have to say, if the engineer couldn't figure out the angle on the roof, he wasn't much of an engineer, I could tell you that.
Well, and our rep, actually, the DOT representative, who is an engineer, had a very similar take on the situation. So, that one's not done yet.
Is there any other projects here that we know of that are going to come to light that's going to cost more money?
Well, I know the contractors worry about the floor beams. He's, you know, that's the major still undiscovered item. That's what he's worried about. Past that point, I believe the building's been pretty well looked at. There are some other adjustments that have to be made, and that's why he's giving us this list of possibilities, so.
It's winter time, John.
Hi, Janet. What we're trying to do is whenever there's something that is discovered, is to find a way to redesign to avoid having to, you know, do a change order. But it is. It's a, it is a, there is no doubt. When you deal with an old building like that and you can't build contingency into your budget, and DOT, they admit their process is for building roads and bridges and not for redoing buildings. But here we are. And, you know, the one thing I will say, we ended, it was a, you know, two days ago, it was a sometimes contentious meeting, but it ended up with, you know, basically a sense we are all in the same boat. The contractors on the contract with the village, we are under contract with DOT. Everybody, even DOT goes to the feds. They can't really approve anything without federal approval. Everybody's in this together, and everybody's trying to work to try and, you know, resolve this as well as we can for the village.
He uses the list, anyway. It's winter time, and boys ain't got that much to do anyway. We could throw them in there and do what we got to do.
We had kicked this around, if you remember. That was back when we were looking at how to bring the cost down.
Right.
What could the crew do? And we thought, "Well, the contractor's not going to want to share the site with the crew." That was the big thing. How would that possibly work? We talked that through with Brian in the office. But luckily, we have a contractor, and he's very comfortable with the guys, and he's willing to consider it, so. It'll be a minute. So, that'll be, you know, over the next week, couple of weeks. We'll sit down, get Vince and get Brian, and see what might work.
We still have a few volunteers, too, that want to jump in there and help out.
Any questions?
We'll make it.
I believe we will.
We still got that money from the charitable society.
That's included in there.
Oh, it's included.
That's in there.
Isn't it?
Yep, 32.5.
And that's, you know, as we make, if we are going to do this, if we do go ahead and have the crew do some of the work, we're going to have to file an appeal to the Federal Highway Association, because this is stimulus money. It was meant to create jobs. So, we're going to have to demonstrate that the cost is significantly more than expected when we went out after the grant Monday. I mean, we have pulled in about another $300,000 into this project. You know, there's funding sources, and we'll show that. I mean, we'll say, "Look at what has been done already. We need to get, to have the local labor and leadership."
Between the architect and the engineers, thanks on our big mic.
They did. They took almost a third. And again, that is DOT's process. That is, that's what the sad part.
Well, Melissa, you keep using the word discovery. These people bid this thing. They must have looked at the building.
They do.
Well, they did. They should have discovered that when they looked at the building.
Well, but when you, you know, when you have it, they didn't pull the ceiling down to look up under the roof.
No, now you're telling me about the sills underneath. Dick Baker and I were down there about three, four years ago, and it was all rotten underneath there. I mean, that's discovery, isn't it? Didn't they look under there?
You know, John, they crawled around. We don't, underneath, we don't know yet. I mean, we still, that's not, this is the contractor's concern. He's going to find trouble, so. I mean, the building was, was, to our knowledge, thoroughly examined. I can tell you, they billed for 84 hours.
They bid it on thorough examination. Apparently, they didn't do their work, but that's not our problem.
I think we're in agreement on that.
Well, I know, but now you're talking about $300,000 more, this and that. They examined the building. They made the bid. Whatever had to be done is supposed to be done. You keep saying discovery. It's not a discovery. Four years ago, we were in this, I'll tell you that.
There might be more problems, though.
Well, I'm saying, you keep saying, using the word discovery. This is not new stuff. This is old stuff.
Well, John, I don't know what to tell you. I can tell you that, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure what I'm going to say that's going to satisfy you.
Well, they bid it for a certain amount of money, and they should perform the work for that certain amount of money, no matter what it cost them.
But that's not what the law says, and that's not construction practice. So, that may be your opinion, but that's not, legally, the village would have no grounds to enforce that if they bid based upon a certain assumption. Again, the contractor is not, was not responsible for the assessment of the building.
But somebody's responsible. And it's not the Village of Rouse's Point.
And they, if we find that there is negligence, there are errors and omissions that we can recover, I assure you, I can't imagine that this board would not do everything that's powered to do that. But the bottom line is, change orders are a part of construction projects as a norm. Typically, you'd want to build in 10% to 15%. When you dig, when you do an old structure, you do that in a construction project.
Well, they must have allowed for that when they bid it.
But unfortunately, there's no contingency in this process.
I don't know.
John, it happens all the time. I built the house. I wasn't supposed to have any stairs going in the house, because my basement was supposed to be completely underground. They hit water. My basement came six feet above ground. I had to put stairs in the house. The contractor didn't pay for me to put stairs in my house. I did. I had to do that. It's not the contractor's fault that they hit water. It's not contractor's fault that they went into this building and started pulling boards up and found stuff that wasn't there that they couldn't see physically. I mean, you're not allowed, you can't go into an old building that you know is full of asbestos, pull off boards to see what's underneath. You can't disturb it.
Well, if you're going to bid it, that's what I do.
But you can't.
You can't, because of asbestos.
Couldn't they get underneath the building before and look underneath the building?
They did. They crawled underneath. They crawled. But I think that there's something between, like, again, I'm not an expert on this, what you can see from the crawl space and the joys that the floors sit on. I don't believe you have a clear sightline up from the crawl space.
When Dick and I, his brother got in before, it was also what they call toe-nailing in. The whole foundation was coming in like this, so that means the sills were gone then. That was a long time ago. And we're not engineers, but I'll tell you what, we can see that.
Well, Dick, thank heavens, Dick has been with me on this project from the beginning, on the project, so you can be sure that whatever knowledge he had went in that existing condition to report, because he's been there from the get-go and through the whole process happily.
It's double boarded, so you couldn't see until you get them boarding up how the tops of the sills were.
I don't know.
The first ones he pulled, they were, I was there when he pulled the first two.
The first top. They should have bothered to check the building before they bid it.
You don't go into somebody's house and work with their floors to enjoy something like the great project.
If you're bidding rebuilding it, that's what I do.
All right. Well, it's moot point. We're not going to, we're just going to continue betting heads, so we're just going to off the table that discussion.
Any other questions I can answer for you, for the board? So, I will, as soon as I have additional information to pass along, pass it along, and maybe we can set up a meeting with Brian and Vince Jamison. Well, first with Brian and the board, and then try to meet with Vince and see how we might work this out.
If we need to have a special meeting, maybe we could do that.
Yeah.
Push it along, because, you know, four weeks, and then we'd start getting into the holidays and.
Okay. That sounds good.
Is this 10 years now? Nine years, I think?
Well, it's 10 years since the village acquired it. I've only been working on it for seven, so it's been 10 years.
We need to just get it done and move on.
I think we will all be very happy, to the point that we're all out from under the responsibility.
Yes. I really.
Thank you.
Thank you. When was it, Janet?
Hi, sorry, I'm late. I misjudged the time. I'm Janet Kennedy.
Brian Jefferson. Nice to meet you, Janet.
Good to meet you. I'm the director of Lake Stolax Passage, and I've come to give you overview of what we're doing. How much time do I have? How many hours? I missed him, Miss. I mean, I know it's going to.
It's what you need, so.
Okay. I did bring some materials for you. Lake Stolax Passage is a New York State highway. It basically comes from Canadian border, right here, Rouse's Point, all the way down to Troy, following 9, 9N, Route 4. It connects six counties, Clinton, Essex, Moore, Washington, Saratoga, and Rensselaer Counties. So, it's really from Troy to the border. We have a formal agreement with Quebec to include the Richelieu Valley. So, interpretively, the story goes from the capital region all the way up to throughout, connecting the Upper Hudson River, Lake George, Lake Champlain, and the Richelieu River, Champaign Canal. The program that Lake Stolax Passage has developed, we have a, we had the state designation, and then about 10 years ago, we got Federal Highway Administration designation, this All-American Road, which had really opened up funding through the byway program that Rouse's Point, when did, I don't know, what was that, eight years ago? Maybe you got a grant that you did.
2006.
Was that six? Okay. So, that was seven years ago? Yeah, right. That paid for some kiosks and a few other things here in Rouse's Point, right? The scenic byway program has changed with the new transportation law, but the state of New York still intends to have funding for particularly trails, highway improvements, things like that. As an all-American road, Lake Stolax Passage is the prioritized project in the state of New York. So, that positions all the communities really well. What we have done is really looked at how to create an experience for travelers to come and travel the corridor and that sort of stuff. So, we've spent over 10 years in doing interpretive planning, people in the community, met with what are your stories, that sort of stuff. And we came up with a structure where we have identified communities to serve as waypoint communities. They're the places where there's shopping, dining, lodging, whatever. They can then serve as a hub for the smaller communities and regions that surround them. And within each waypoint community is at least one facility that we would like to have serve as what we call a heritage center. Most cases, there's the local museum, historical society organization, library in some places. Some places, you have local environmental organization. Depends on what. some places, the local environmental organization, depends on what the community wants. That heritage center is designed to meet and greet the visitor, and we describe that in this piece, this full-color one. And this talks about heritage centers and having people come and delivering sort of a place-based, authentic tourism experience. So what we're trying to do is then work with organizations to sort of have a reason for people to come to Ross's Point and come to a certain place where there's people who are like volunteers of the organization that's serving as the heritage center, to sort of say what's special and unique in the place. So that's sort of the gist of the idea, but the, the purpose is to sort of increase that local community awareness, appreciation, participation for what are the resources, historic, natural, cultural, that are important to the community, for future generations. So we've done a bunch of planning, I think the railroad, is that what you were just talking about?
Yes.
We had talked about that, maybe being the heritage center for Ross's Point. We, as an organization, will help Ross's Point, we've asked you guys to sign a resolution, and I think you sort of wanted to know why you shouldn't sign the resolution. With that resolution, then we would sort of have a formal agreement that we, as an organization, will help you guys find the funding for that heritage center, to get the exhibits, deliver them to visitors, attract the visitors, basically, and keep that organization alive. A big piece of our strategy is working with the organizations to make sure that they have good governance, they have programs, activities, events, that attract people, so that they can actually stay economically viable. We did a project in Essex County for eight communities and eight heritage centers, which is actually what led to this full-color piece that we had there. It was tremendously successful. Those museums and facilities really strengthened and all that sort of stuff, but that's a whole other project and topic for another time. But, so the reason for the resolution is so that we, as an organization, will formally, you know, we can work with you guys to help make sure that we can successfully do it. Lake Swat Passage has a collaboration with National Geographic, and our website, which I brought this thing, there's only one copy of it, if you want more, I can get some more. But we have a website with National Geographic, it's co-branded, kind of a little tricked-out thing that all the content is contributed by the people who live here. So a local business, a museum, even authors can post their local books, if it's written about the region, whatever, tons of information can be put on this website. But it's all in the words of the people who live here, rather than some ad agency or some corporate, you know, anywhere in USA sort of message on a website. So we're starting to use that technology along with the other things we've been developing, interpretive signs, the kiosks. Have you guys seen the passage minute we did on Ross's Point about the, about prohibition and stuff?
No, no.
Through our website, there's one about Ross's Point, and that, it was actually kind of a fun one about how your park and everything is all built on the crushed glass from the prohibition and stuff, it's kind of fun. We've got a whole series, I think forty-some-odd of these, what we call passage minutes. The steward shops is how, underwrite, developing of these passages. And so there's sort of local history, fun factoids or whatever about places. These are starting to come together now, you just hit this, into a, doing a mobile app, which we're calling a passage port, which is linking sites that are there to an interpretive story, and then leading you to a museum, or a business, or a theater, or a place where you could get more information, whatever. But it creates a two-to-five-day reason for a trip. And that one is mapped out for using Stoddard's Guidebook to Lake George, which he wrote in eighteen seventy-three, and bringing it up to twenty-first century with linking the signs and sites and stuff like that. So those are the types of products that we're working on doing, and we'd love to really do more for Ross's Point. I see that there's three opportunities for Ross's Point that I'd love to talk further to members of the community and you guys about. The historical society had talked to us about the railroad, history and heritage and stuff, as being sort of a thing, that you'd like to express in the facility once it gets fixed up and is ready for exhibits. But there's two other things that have struck me that really nobody else can deliver as well as Ross's Point could. One of them is about birding and sort of the nature things. Right across the lake, I know it's in Iran, but the wildlife preserves the.
Swat's Quirk.
Right, right. That reserve actually does not really have a community attached to it. You know, Swanton and St. Albans, along with you guys, are a snowstorm. Makes all the sense in the world for Ross's Point to maybe market more for birding and nature stuff and everything with that being like a major destination, as well as, we've got a bunch of other stuff where there's. The birding audience is a huge audience. I've got people in Quebec who would like to be partners along the nature and birding thing, so we could bring that together. But I think Ross's Point maybe could serve as sort of a hub for Lake Champlain, Northern Lake Champlain, and the whole nature and everything. Come here, spend a weekend, go birding, whatever, you've got lodging, dining, all that sort of stuff, who knows that? The other one is the connection to Quebec, having a place where people could comfortably do day trips up into Quebec, come back, where they speak the same language. I think that that's a big gap for Americans particularly, feeling comfortable to go there. And there's some tremendous interpretive opportunities that have been untapped to date. One in particular that struck me, I was up doing a training up there in Quebec a year or so ago, with the local museums up there. There's a couple stories, Revolutionary War, when the loyalists, you know, when the British lost and the loyalists reset, they went to Canada, they didn't die, and so Sir Johnson, all those guys, they knew about land up there, I mean, that's the whole thing that fed the whole Quebec rebellion and everything, because that French land got taken away from them. That's a story that nobody can go over telling. It'd be really cool to maybe have a lodging spot here for Ross's Point. So those are some things I just want to throw out there for you guys who're all over, as sort of a little niche market for this cultural heritage tourism market. So to loop that, I'm here to answer your questions, I don't know about, you know, formally becoming the, the way to come in the way to.
No, I might email you some questions about the resolution.
Okay.
Just because still the very, the article was very vague on what Ross's Point's responsibilities would be for signing that resolution.
We deliberately made it vague, because I think what it says is that you will contribute to the extent that you are able to do it. We do ask all waypoint communities to contribute two hundred and fifty dollars a year to Lake Swat Passage, so that we can keep mulling around and help you get grants and that kind of stuff. It's not a requirement, but it's something that helps to keep a support to do that. That's why it's, that's why the vagueness is in there. If you guys just don't have it in your budget, that doesn't mean we're gonna disappear and not talk to you anymore, but we also, there's a little bit of a two-way street. So that, if that's the question is, particularly, that's.
Where do you live?
I personally live in Virginia. We have an office in Crown Point and another one in Discover. First person's asking.
You have a couple questions for Melissa.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Thanks, Janet. Janet, in terms of the, the passage minute on the ronroing, is that linked to the village website?
I don't know, but it could be. It's on YouTube, it'd be very easy to do.
I think it would be something that would be great to link to the website, and I was just wondering, you said, you know, tell local stories, you have local content. Who provided you with that information, and did anyone from Ross's Point bet that for you?
What information?
On, on the local minute on Ross's Point?
Oh, yeah, we worked with the historical society. I can't remember who it was, all the pictures and everything came from the local historical society. You guys had an exhibit in the village hall, I think, there were some things.
Okay, I'm not aware, but that's great, so we'll give that link to the website. You know, the only thing that, that concerned me as I looked at the reservation, Janet, was that, as you are well aware, there are times when the village of Ross's Point might have a priority that they would be seeking funding for, that they would actually be in competition with Lake Swat for some of your regional grants?
I don't know that that, in what instance that would be.
Say a local waterfront grant, or a scenic byway grant, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering about, in that area, I mean, would you, would you come to the village and talk about your plans and, and discuss what you were thinking about applying for, so that they could let you know what their individual plans would be? Because they are very, you know, the, the village has been very active in, in seeking grant funding of its own.
In the past, Lake Swat Passage as an organization has applied for grants through the scenic byway program, that, that's what paid for the NatGIL partnership.
Right, right.
It's paid for all of our interpretive planning, all that sort of stuff. To be honest, that money isn't available anymore, that's gone. Those were things that we did, and personally, I think very wisely invested into where we are today, so that the grants that will be coming in the future will be municipal-oriented things, bike trails, pull-offs, things like that. They're gonna be much more oriented to transportation infrastructure, and I'm told, like, exhibits are no longer going to be funded. Lake Swat Passage itself does not have infrastructure to maintain, we deliberately do not even intend to do that. So we, as an organization, would not apply for a grant or something that would be in competition with a municipality. We have clumped groups, like the ones in Essex County, we got a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant that we divided up between the eight municipalities, and they each got money for each one of their little museums for exhibits and that sort of stuff. So sometimes we'll do that and administer them, that waterfront grant that we did the planning stuff, but that was a planning grant so it really could get the other grants. So I don't really see that that's in competition with what, you know, it held position so Ross's Point could be eligible for other funding. So I can't think of an instance where we, as an organization, would be competing against Ross's Point for funding.
What do you see as potential funding sources that you'll be pursuing in the future now that the scenic byways, maybe it's changed?
A number of things. One of the things that we see, where we're hopeful, although it's not clear what's happening, the governor's path through history program?
Yes, yes.
I see that is where we can do more of these things like this Stoddard deal. In fact, we have several along, sort of, an eighteen-twelve one, we actually applied for a CFA grant to do the eighteen-twelve mobile app, one for Underground Railroad, one, and one for agriculture. And those three were for the Clinton, Essex County area, but I don't know if those are ever gonna be awarded. What the state is now. So those kinds of things.
Be surprised if they award that.
I'm not sure they have any money.
That doesn't seem to, they, they, you'll see, I would be astounded if you don't see the path through history program coming.
Anyway, yeah, I think I would be optimistic. Anyway, so that's what we're going to be doing. We are in a position now to start getting more corporate foundation support, like the stewards' money, we're creating, you know, so we're starting to do that sort of thing to benefit the communities. The other big thing that's happened, and that's part of the reason why I came forward with the idea about doing something with the wildlife refuge there. As a geotourism project with National Geographic, there's eight in the country right now, most of them are out west, and they are affiliated with Department of Interior Federal Lands, with public lands, National, Yellowstone, Glacier, what does that mean, the four corners region. There's a formal agreement between the Department of Interior, National Geographic, and the geotourism projects, of which we are one of them, and I'm actually on the board for this geotourism national thing. And a couple weeks ago, I was actually down in Washington and met with the undersecretary of Interior, the woman who's just underneath Salazar. In fact, we were talking about having Salazar come to New York City to launch Lake Swat Passage next summer for these passages. But she had made a commitment of the federal lands, they really want to strengthen the relationship between the geotourism projects and the public lands, the federal public lands, for marketing to international markets, to bring in the international travelers. And that's where our relationship in particular, if we could get something with wildlife refuge, money can come from the Department of Interior for marketing and for meeting the marketing packages and stuff. So those are the roads that we're starting to go to now, through the geotourism thing. And basically, she told me, she said, tell me what you want. So we're gonna get back to it with what we want.
So the village has just formed a, a new revitalization committee, reinvigorated the committee that they had years ago, and I believe the historical society will have members attending. So it would be great if you could let us know, so that we can give input and coordinate in terms of your efforts. Because I think those are all areas that I, I don't think would be the thrust, we're tend to work more on the tourism infrastructure, the actual accommodations and services and shops and so on, so.
But you need the experience of the product for people to come and stay in those things. And so that's what we're trying to look to do.
Understood, understood, right.
So that's why I don't see that there's really any conflict.
I think with, with good, with good coordination with the revitalization committee and historical society, it would definitely be.
Would be great. Drew O'Bearney, who I think has been in contact with you guys, he will be the primary on-the-ground person, I think he's talking about working on this kiosk right now. And one of the things that I would love to have some input on is we put, there is a page on our website for Ross's Point, and there's some narrative on there that we got from various different sources over the years. That, if anybody wants to go on there and add, change things, whatever, that's, feel free, but we just wanted to make sure that Ross's Point. So it's got some, a little bit of history about Ross's Point, some, there's links to things to see and do, says where, you know, who the local elected officials are, who the historian is, gives phone numbers and that sort of stuff. But if any of that's incorrect, let Drew know, and he will be happy. Most of those things, we actually want to pawn off to the local historical society. I think it's set up right now with Drew as the contributor, because we wanted to get something on there, but we'd love to have the contact with the, with the village. And as a waypoint community, you will also be the, helping to facilitate about things around, so that includes Champlain, Towneville, Champlain and other, you know, border regions. Do you have more people that you, that you could use?
Oh, yeah, one more, I have calculated one, there's one trustee missing.
One thing that we did this past summer, there was a two-page spread in National Geographic Traveler. We intend to continue to do some marketing for these national, international audiences through National Geographic Traveler, but we're probably gonna be doing more online. That was very successful. We had a thing with the Montreal Gazette, that, there was a full page in the Montreal Gazette in July, and then we ran some online stuff with Montreal Gazette, and we intend to do more, particularly in Montreal. And as this thing gets stronger legs under it with the geotourism as a whole for the international audiences, the Department of Interior, but we'll keep you posted on that. But if you guys want to mull over the things I suggested about being sort of a place for the cross-border stuff, as well as the nature things, I'll mull yours for eight thousand.
Thank you, Janet. Is there anybody else in the room interested?
Okay. And this little piece is that, when we did the ads in Audubon and stuff, this was the fulfillment piece that was sent out, and we're going to be translating this into for next year.
Do you think you might ever reprise your travel writer tour you did?
Oh, yeah, we did it, we've done two of them.
That was good.
We're actually planning on that next year.
In two thousand and five, Janet brought a group of, they were national, Canadian and American travel writers.
Actually, we had them from Europe too.
Okay, and, and they came, they had lunch right here in this room, we hosted them, took them across the village to see four Montgomery, and got, there were a couple nice ones of Ross's Point articles after that. That was very successful. If you want to keep these and give them to other people?
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pass them around. They'll pass it around.
Any other, any others have questions?
You don't have to stay there, because it's going to be a long meeting.
I'm sorry, I was late.
Listen, can she get one of those stones?
Minutes of the previous meeting, the regular meeting of October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve. We all have copies of three minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of the regular meeting on October fifteenth, two thousand and twelve?
Second. Both parties use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
Any additions or additions?
We have one addition this evening, is to purchase powers for about six hundred dollars. It's posted for the postage machine.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills as amended tonight?
Seconded.
Any other discussion? Any discussions, both parties use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Upsteem.
Stop here, upsteem. No, not this stuff. Okay.
Where's that six hundred go, or is it?
It's postage for the postage meter.
The reports of the mayor and trustees. I have two things. First thing is a resolution, election designating offices, make it for March election. Want to read that, Carol?
I will. Whereas the next general election for the offices shall be held on March nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and whereas the board of trustees is adopting a resolution designating the offices to be filled in such election in the terms. Now therefore be it resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Ross's Point designates the following offices are vacant at the end of the current official year to be filled at the village election to be on March nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Trustee, a two-year term, trustee, a two-year term, and then the justice for a four-year term. Be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to publish the resolution in full in the press Republican. This resolution shall take effect immediately. The following question of the foregiving, do we put to a roll call, which resulted as follows?
I'll make a motion to pass the resolution.
Any discussions? Any discussions, both parties use a sign of aye.
Roll call, mayor.
Oh, roll call, yes.
Vote aye.
Aye.
Okay, discussion, the grinding for the calculation parking lot. They have ten, ten or less of those over there. Let's see, five, eight, twelve. They can take it at any time.
Do you have a lot left? Do you have a lot of it left?
We got some left, yeah. They got, they got that guy put in pile.
We need some for the rec center. We need some for the rec center in the back.
A lot there? I don't know how much more we got.
I don't think you need a lot, but probably one truckload. It's low in air, it's water, it's something.
Been dragging it over.
More and more cars being going back in air.
Yeah. It'll be wet in the spring too, back in there. Needs to be blacked out period.
Yeah, eventually, but this'll help, you know, the pace.
You can take some back. I don't know how much more we've got in the big pile than we have.
Give the legion what they need, that's what they're going to do?
Yeah, if there's enough left, yeah.
And we'll use some down here?
Otherwise, we're going to be stuck. It's going to be a muddy mess back there. Do we, when do they need, I mean, they need it before the snow flies, or?
No, they probably won't do it till spring, I don't know.
Can we talk to Brian first to see how much we can divide up?
Yeah.
Because really, that's, that's a watery mess back there.
Yeah. We can see what he says.
Table it till next time?
All right. Go ahead and table it. Okay. Surplus, the police jeep liberty. Get that out for sale.
I'll make a motion, surplus of police jeep liberty.
Oh, second.
Any discussion? No more discussion, both parties use a sign of aye.
Aye.
Okay. Discussion, the anchorage removal of the foundation. Mr. Fellow, he wrote, Mickey sent a thing to Mr. Patel, and he, Mike Phillips were a lawyer, and he was putting it up for sale. For me, it's just a game plan, just to stall things off. He wants to sell that and sixty bucks parking spaces in the parking lot, which he's still got a subdivide, imagine, and a whole nine yards. I'd say give him thirty more days, and then I'd take everything up. Fill the cellar in, take down that good, that hard work, whatever you want to call it, get it out of here. So, subdivide.
Thirty more days, he's going to put them there in December?
Thirty days from today or tomorrow. Put them into December, if that's...
You know it's not going to sell this time of year.
No, it's not going to sell.
It's not going to sell anyways. Probably won't. Okay, I'll make a motion to give him thirty more days on the project. Okay, hold on a second. Hold on, do it.
Well, I just, I want to talk about it a little bit. Thirty days is going to be in the middle of December. So if we give him thirty days, what happens to the other thirty days?
I'm going to second it, and then we'll vote on it. So it'll follow the teen agent or the rules of the meeting.
Okay.
So seconded. I'm going, I'm going to give my reasons for, I don't think that we should have him fill it in yet. I think we should give him a chance to try and sell the property. I think it needs to be more than thirty days. We are coming up for a slow time. I know it's an eyesore in the village. I do feel that if the property's able to be sold, it probably is more better off out of the foundation there. Unless we want to get an engineering read on it that says the foundation's no longer viable, and the village is going to pay for that to do that, then I think we should probably leave it alone and let it see if it sells. We can give him a timeframe of how long that is, and we can't be unreasonable with it. I think we'd want to give him at least six to eight months to try to sell that. It would be an asset, somebody actually bought that and put a business back on that property.
So you want to leave it open for six months?
I would prefer that happen, so he can get through the planning board, get what he needs to do, get his parking space split off. If he can't, the planning board seems that he doesn't have enough parking spaces for his hotel and the restaurant to be there, and come back and look at it then and tell him to fill it in. But as it stands right now, I'd rather not fill it from.
Can we tell him to take down that arch and put a cap on top of it, a wooden cap? White wood cap?
He's been for one for five years.
He doesn't have the money.
We don't have the money, you know that. You never will. That's our, we'll wait until first of June out of that. I guess I'm six months, seven months.
So we just need to vote on the...
I agree, it's an eyesore.
Yes. People second it. Everybody talked to him, wants to get, wants it out of there.
We got to do it the right way, so we don't get hooked here. I'd love to see that.
Seven, seven months, then. That's way too much, but go ahead, you guys. First, seconded, any other discussions?
Wait, we have to finish. We, we had to vote on telling him to fill it in before we move on. So.
Hey, I made the motion to give him thirty days.